I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Leftwood to lead us in an invitation.
Lead right.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to do the business of the city for the benefit of the citizens. Lord, we thank you for this morning's rain. Lord, we pray that you would bring us more as you desire. Lord, we thank you for bringing our city attorney back from her illness, Lord, and for your help in helping her heal, her healing. Lord, we just ask that you be with us and we make decisions tonight, Lord, for the benefit of the citizens, that we make them based on objectiveness and that we use our wisdom to make sure that we make good decisions. Lord, we just ask these things in Jesus' name.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to tell you we're glad to have you here in our meeting tonight. And this is not a very long lengthy agenda, so we think it might be shorter than usual, but we'll see. Item one is public announcement of the events. Are there any events that you'd like to announce? Tomorrow night, we have a celebration of the 25th anniversary of United Launch Alliance being our community. I think that's still open.
It's, uh, are you speaking?
Yeah. I think that's open to the public at the United Launch Alliance from six, beginning at 6:00 PM.
About 3:00 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:00. 5:30 to 7:00. Okay. One of our great corporate citizens, our aerospace business here in Harlingen, we have the Grand International Airport. Any other events that anyone would like to announce?
If I just may thank the citizens, Mayor?
Yes.
I am a breast cancer survivor, and many of you have reached out to me in so many ways, thanking for your blessings and your thoughts. I'm positive that they are what helped me get through this. I continue to fight every day, and thank you for allowing me to continue to be your city attorney during this time.
Item two is board member recognition. And I think we have a support member of recognition of Vanessa Cerfa. David, is she here, Vanessa? Come on up here to take a picture. They're gonna take your picture, and it'll be on the city website and everything. So we want to congratulate Vanessa for agreeing to serve on the Harlingen Housing Authority Board. They do so much great work for our community, and it's a very important board that serves our housing needs in the community, and they do such a fabulous job and are recognized for their good stewardship. And Vanessa has agreed to serve with the board and service. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd just like to add one thing about Vanessa. Give her my personal reference. She did participate in the leadership partnership group with me and two been outstanding members of the board.
All right. Well, we're glad to have her on that board. I was proud to make that appointment. David Crofton has agreed to serve on our senior citizens advisory board and was appointed by Christopher Trevino. Thank you for agreeing to serve on this newly created board. We appreciate you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You've been a volunteer and working with this important group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Last but not least, John Givaud. Newly appointed to our Harlingen Community Improvement Board. It's important. It's got a lot of important things to improve the quality of life in our community, and I think it's gonna have some important decisions and opportunities to be made. So, John, thank you for agreeing to serve and appreciate your interest in the board.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. Item three is the neighborhood clean sweep from December 1st, which is connected to West Cleveland, West McKinley, and West Verso St. from Third Street to B Street from 8:30 Avenue.
Mayor, I just wanted to provide information to the commission and the neighborhood team that happened on December 1st in the area of West Cleveland, McKinley, and Rutherford, from Third Street to B Street, which is for District 4, which is the Mission Sanchez District. They picked up a total of 8.41 tons of debris and 85 towers, and you can see some of the pictures of some of the tires and some of the debris that we picked up. The Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department was there along with other volunteers, and you can see some of the pictures of them picking up some of the trash and debris. And we certainly want to thank all the volunteers that assisted us. We couldn't have done it without the teamwork of the volunteers.
Okay. Were there any folks that participated in that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear from you. I could come down. Mr. Sanchez, you want to come down here and help me present these certificates? Okay. Thank you so much for doing this. This is an important activity every month for our community. We want to make sure that Harlingen is bright and shiny and that it's looking new and that it's completely refreshed out, and you all doing that is a tremendous service to not everybody, not just everybody in the neighborhood, but everybody in the entire city. So it's important to thank you for what you did. And so we want to recognize those. If I read your name, raise your hand and I'll introduce you. Olga F. New. Thank you. Congratulations. We have Luis Lopez and Jessica Pena. Jessica, thank you so much. Nancy Goxa. Nancy, thank you. We also have Marcos Rios, Jesse Maniz, Bobby Rochester, Jerry Rivas, Emily Ramirez, Paciano Morin, Victor Zaldaña, Jesús Garcia, Jesse Hernandez, and Maria Lopez. Thank all of them, and can you deliver those?
Yes, I shall.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October 3rd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like signed, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item 5A and 5B extended agenda, is there a motion without the consent of final review?
Show them, Mayor.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item six, public hearing and presentation regarding the draft fiscal year 2012 consolidated annual performance evaluation report for community development.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Kishers. Program year 2011-12 ended on September 30th. Our accomplishments for the year are identified in our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report and must be submitted to HUD by December 31st. On November 30th, a notice advising the public of when and where they could review a copy of the draft was published in the Valley Star. Additionally, we have ready to have a presentation summarizing of the report, which I will share with you shortly, after which we ask that you open the floor for public comment. We plan to hold a second public hearing on Tuesday, December 11th, before the community development advisory board, beginning at 5:30 PM. The hearing will be held in a conference room at the Monty Hill Building located at Iwatu's Tyler. In closing, if any of you would like a complete hard copy of the draft or the final report, we consider we do that for you. As you know, our mission is to create and develop viable communities with superb customer service, community outreach partnerships, and economic development, affordable housing, social service agency. Our vision ultimately is to improve the quality of life of Harlingen's low and moderate income citizens through actions which promote affordable housing, a clean environment, the efficient delivery of human service programs, and the encouragement of citizen participation within our neighborhoods. As you can see, our CUBG funding and home funding has been greatly reduced since 2002-2003. It's been cut by about $500,000. Our home funds have suffered the same loss with about half of the funds, about $200,000 loss. At the beginning of the year, we started with about just over $1.3 million. Our 2011-2012 grant was just under $900,000, and we received about $54,000 in program income. So subtotal, we had about $2.2 million available to us. Our current year expenditures were just over $1.1 million, and our expanded project balances as of September 30th were just over $1 million. This chart is just to basically show you what we generally spend our money on. As you can see, drainage improvements is our largest expenditure. Second, only to housing rehabilitation, reconstruction, and then to public services. We also fund clearance and demo, park improvements, and target area neighborhood improvement investment program, which we spent about $19,000. I'll go over it more specifically in just a few minutes. Under the home program, we spent about $126,000 for town payment assistance, $140 in administrative support. We spent almost $15,000 building one unit through the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Program. And to our new construction, the affordable housing program, we spent about $114,000. Total spent was $1.4 million. Approximately $2,800 was spent, along with $478,000 in disaster funding to complete Phase 4 of the Northwest Drainage Improvement Projects. This project provided 5,300 linear feet of storm sewer pipe, 2,600 liter feet of box culverts, and 3,800 square yards of payment-related appliances. The project benefited about 3,000 people, of which 63% are low and moderate income. These are just pictures of the project ongoing. We spent about $610,000 in Centers Track 110 completing Phases 1 and Phase 2 of the Buchanan Hayes and M Street project. This project provided about 2,500 linear feet of storm sewer pipe, about 8,100 square yard of pavement, and the project benefited about 3,100 people, of which 74% were low and moderate income. In our target area neighborhood improvement program, we spent about $19,000 to construct sidewalks. Upon completion, the project well benefit 3,800 people, of which about 70.5% are low and moderate, and in-kind labor and about $45,000 was provided by the Public Works and Engineering Department. We also, as a result of code enforcement staffs, an additional seven structures were voluntarily demolished and owners repaired two structures. The city engineer has already drawn the plans for Phase 3 for Buchanan Hayes and M Street, which he bid out in January once authorization is given to us by the Texas General Land Office. The total project cost is approximately $1.8 million. And the code enforcement department has also provided hell numerous neighborhood things in that specific area alone. These are just pictures of the sidewalk improvements that have been done thus far. They're not quite finished, but they will be shown. Ranger Mill Road Park improvements, we did about $16,000 worth of improvements this past year. We installed 14 street lights and one 250-watt floodlight on added poles and existing poles along the park's jogging and walking trail. The project benefited about 2,500 people, of which 60% are LMI. Okay, it's going way too fast. There we go. Okay, I'm not sure what's going on with that. This is our housing reconstruction and rehabilitation program. On the left, you have a before picture of what the property looked like, and on the right, a completely rebuilt building. All in all, in our housing rehab program, we were able to complete 10 other occupied homes, and we have one underway as of September 30th, which we just planned to pay the final retainment out this week. We have plans and specifications on four homes that were bid out in October, and another two homes were inspected for lead-based paint. Of the 12, 12 were elderly households, 12 were also female household, and four out of the 17 total assisted were disabled. Again, we just spent about $240,000 on that activity. For public services, we spent $117,500. We funded five agencies, the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Community Outreach Program, CASA, Lozen Fishes, and the Cameron County Children's AIDS Center. We provided about $117,000. They were actually able to leverage over $2 million to provide services to a little over 1,400 people in Harlingen. The Boys and Girls Club were funded $47,800, and 760 youth were served. CASA was provided $29,500, and they were able to provide advocacy services to 84 abused and inflected children. And if you're wondering why the picture on the left, it's where taking the back of the children to protect their privacy. And on the far, on the top left, is actually a picture of the CASA advocate serving our The Senior Companion Program provides various services to our homebound elderly. We provided them $20,000. With that, they were able to train 10 senior companions, which provided 11,287 service hours to 47 homebound elderly. Lozen Fishes Shelter, we were providing them $16,000, and they helped. They provided emergency shelter to 503 homeless, as well as providing essential services. And on the left there, you have pictures of the men's shelter and dayroom, and on the right, the women's shelter and women's dayroom. Maggie's House, we provided about $4,200, and they were able to provide therapy services to 24 abused and inflected children. And as you can see, the whole facility is very kid-friendly, and on the right-hand side is the room where they're actually videotaping the forensic interviews, which the children cannot see, but are made aware that they are there. On our clearance and demolition program, we spent about $33,000. That money covered the cost of 19 title search updates, one release of lien, and 10 ofestas surveys. Funds were also used to abate ofestas containing materials from four unsafe structures prior to demolition. Actions by the code enforcement department also resulted in 22 structures being repaired and 48 structures being demolished voluntarily. Another 23 vacant structures known for criminal activity were demolished by the Texas National Guard. CUBG funds were used to cover the cost of transportation and proper disposal of demolition debris, and approximately 857, actually 858, were actually disposed of. In-kind services from the code enforcement department were about $25,000. Here's just a couple of pictures of the properties that were actually demolished. We had one new construction completed this year. We actually have several underway, but this one actually was closed by September 30th. Our home investment was $45,000. The lender, a local lender, put in about $74,000. The owner's contribution was roughly $3,500, and we provided a down payment assistance subsidy in the amount of $27,000. We were able to do actually six down payment assistance program projects this year, and I'm going to just fast forward to one in particular for time's sake. On the bottom right-hand corner is a unit at 1717 South Parkwood. Our total investment in this property was about $25,000. 1,400 of that was project-related costs for inspections and things like that. The principal note was actually $54,000. But the owner's contribution, as you can see, they were saving quite a while, they actually contributed $13,000 of their own money into this purchase. On the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Program, we spent about $14,700. We have, we're at about 50% of completion of Unit 1. The Juvenile Justice Department plans to bid out electrical plumbing and HVAC category work in December 2012. To date, they've actually had 42 students put in about 1,500 hours, and 11 students have successfully completed the program. Again, our total home expenditures was $254,463.73. We provided assistance to six families with direct subsidies. One eligible home buyer purchased new homes constructed by the Harlingen CDC. And we currently have five affordable units that are currently underway. Six lots have already been purchased for the construction of more affordable housing. This is just kind of, is a chart just basically outlining how much money we have available in the various activities. Again, we have just under $2 million available to spend this year, most of which is in affordable housing. Our second highest fund availability is our housing rehab program. And third is our drainage improvements.
I have a question for you. You mentioned that you purchased additional lots for future affordable housing?
Yes, sir.
What are y'all purchasing? Are you looking, I mean, is it part of the subdivision together, or are y'all looking in the neighborhoods at some of these?
It's on a spot basis. And ultimately, what we can afford to buy, we try, if we can buy four more units and get them at a discount, we will certainly try to do that, but HUD does ask us to spread them out.
Well, that's not where I'm going, because if we've got projects that are tearing down structures, or we've got tax sales, I mean, are y'all doing any tax up purchases, or?
The Harlingen CDC would do that, yes. They do that on occasion.
They would go down there, they would try to take advantage of some of the...
On tax foreclosures, yes.
Yeah, try to get some of those.
Most definitely.
To get more lots.
Yes, sir.
And maybe buy some lots when they're tearing down properties and rebuilding some buildings.
Anything we can do to save money.
Okay.
That's a good question. On our additional funding sources, we did receive $479,000 from our Neighborhood Stabilization Program. That's funded through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. We used that money to demolish seven unsafe structures and acquire and rehabilitate five foreclosed homes. The TDAHA will provide permanent finance to two eligible households and home buyer assistance of up to $30,000 to five eligible households at closing. Any unexpended funds will be captured by the state. We also received disaster recovery funding through the Department of Rural Affairs, which is now the Texas General Land Office, in amount of over $2.3 million. Thus far, we've completed Phase 4 of the Northwest Drainage Area Drainage Project and Phase 2, sorry, Phases 1 and 2 of Buchanan Hayes and M Street drainage projects. The remainder of the funds will go towards Phase 3. The total amount of additional funding administered just this year was just under $1 million. And this is just basically a chart showing our total expenditures. As you can see, most of it's going to public facilities, drainage parks, and sidewalks. Second, our second highest expenditure is in housing. Our third is in administration due to a pending lawsuit. Our clearance and demolition expenditures are down, but we expect to increase especially since year back to where. And then last, this is our public services. And that completes my presentation.
Does the commission have any questions?
Another question.
Yes, sir.
How can you be eligible to buy one of these houses? How do you determine who can buy a house?
Generally speaking, all of the households have to be at 80% or below of the area median income. We do have those income limits on our department website. There are some additional underwriting criteria that they do have to meet. The lowest credit score right now is 580 that the lenders will accept. They prefer they be at 620 or above. Obviously, the lower the credit score is, the harder it is for you to secure that primary loan.
Do you have a time list for vacancy there?
Yes, we do. In fact, we will be, we have two ads scheduled for December. We'll schedule another one in January, and we plan to do one every month until then, till we spend all of that money.
I have another question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do y'all do any business with the San Diego Orange Department of Justice Department to benefit from their down payment assistance or any of their...
Is that money available to Harlingen residents to purchase? I will look into that. Not to my knowledge, but I will be aware of that.
They also have, we have a loan program that as well provides tax credits that gives the mortgage.
The mortgage credits, I think. We have had a couple of people come and actually receive credits.
Yeah, that's a good thing, too, because that drops the mortgage debt down and also increases the opportunity for buying a bigger house on a lower...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commission, have any other questions?
Just one question, and I talked to the city manager about this. On the Senior Companion Program, is there programs for some seniors that need wheelchair ramps or anything like that? Could you do a look?
I'm not sure if the Senior Community Outreach actually administers that service. I know that the CBA board does that. I believe that's done through Adult Retensive Services. There are other programs that administer those types of services. We do them as part of our housing rehab, but typically, we're addressing not just ADA modifications, but actual code violations and things like that. We actually bring the standard house up to code. But yes, sir.
And so it looks like you're keeping, each year you keep setting money aside for the future year. Did I perceive that correctly?
Actually...
Or do you spend almost everything?
Because we try to spend as much as we possibly can. We've had some delays with, you know, working with the state. There are additional requirements on the review side, and so that's kind of been a barrier. But things seem to be moving along much quicker as their deadline to spend money is coming up. They're tending to make things easier and easier for us, so we are actually starting to receive money, and the review process is getting quicker.
Does she have to send that money back if we don't...
Exactly. We don't want to do that.
If we don't program it, allocate it, it has to be goes back.
Has to be utilized or sent back?
So it's their, it's in everybody's interest for you to try to spend it on.
Yes, sir.
And then they were recognized a couple of years ago by the region for the way they have been in compliance. Their compliance efforts have been recognized statewide, regionalized basis. Very, very good in what they do. All right, this is public hearing. Any questions or comments? All right, if you can come up to the podium, state your name, give us your voter registration address.
Yes, Jerry Moore, 709 Town Land Drive. And I just wanted to thank the lady there for the presentation that's pretty awesome. Pretty, pretty nice homes that they're building, and it's quite an impressive improvement over some of the places that were there before. I just wanted to share with the commission, and I hope that you can take this to heart along with what they're doing here, that I'd like to see that the AEP with providing power to these homes with the smart meters and now with broadband over power lines coming in, that there's many, many construction projects going on around the country that are being halted as a result of the radiation that's being emitted through the smart meters, through the power grid, and into people's homes. And since we're putting some of the weakest and elderly in these homes, I would ask that the city include in their study here AEP's presentation, as well as that cell tower comes up. AEP's presentation, as well as cell tower companies' radiation emissions onto these homes and onto, onto the properties. That radiation levels have increased tremendously around this country, and specifically here in Harlingen, it is rising to a very rapid level. And in the future, I need to be able to share with each and every one of you what is going on with the cell towers, with the smart meters, and with the broadband, and what it's doing to the neighborhoods. So anyhow, in the future, please take that to task. Thank you.
All right, so anyone else like comment, like a comment? Here now, close the public hearing, and there's no action. This was just a presentation. So I want to again thank the recognized board members. The board members who are here in the CDPG would like you to be recognized. Thank you for your hard work. It's, it amazes me every, every year how much is accomplished by the CDPG even with these declining revenues that they have and the good effort you make in administering these other, these other revenues, like disaster recovery revenues for district-related projects that we have in our community. So I want to congratulate you and thank you again for all the good work of the CDPG staff and the board guys. Thank you. Item 7 is to consider take action to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Texas Home and Home Services Department relating to the provision of personnel for an on-site homeless management and determination system technical support staff.
Mayor, the funding agency has requested that we table this item until the next meeting. They'd like to be heard to make a presentation. So rest and decide to table.
All right, all right. Motion table is aye. All those parents say aye. Motion carries. Table is aye. Consider take action to approve a contract to develop corporate furniture, co-straits center for $30,000 for career services center, for trade through services.
Mayor, this one, the ADC is providing, it's a contract between the Co-straits Center and the ADC. The ADC is agreeing to provide $10,000 per month for three months from November to January 2030 for operating expenses for the career center, to provide career center services.
Mayor, make the motion that we approve the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All those parents say aye. I suppose like sign. Motion carries. Item 9, consider take action to approve the letter of employment letter from the Yerba Corporation Furniture and Furniture Company, move the letter of preference to subvention, consisting of 59.29 acre tract of land situated in Cameron County, Texas, and survey number 27, abstract number 32, City Furniture and Cameron County, Texas, and being all block 24, and parts of lots 23, 29, and 30 in the Barren Brazil Road, all of which are shown on the platte, Petersburg Civic subdivision, part lot 1, block 1, the Branson subdivision unit in addition to the City Furniture and Cameron County, as recorded in volume 20, page 37, MRCCCT, said 59.29 acre tract, also being all that call for 6.8 acre tract of land described in deed to Ezekiel Reyno Jr., as reported in volume 34, 88, page 2, and the reverse, Cameron County, Texas, all of that, all 9.2 acre tract of land described in deed to Ezekiel Reyno Jr., as reported in volume 33, 98, page 14, DRCCCT, and all of that call, 3.33 acre tract of land described in deed to Reyno Family Development Limited, as reported in document 2008, 53-53902, of the official office of Cameron County, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, uh...
Okay, I'm Cam. He's got a motion to approve.
Yeah, so moved.
I approve.
Thank you for proof that the preliminary is...
And a letter from... Any discussion? Obviously, we could do this for project, but all of them say aye. I suppose like sign. Motion carries.
Let's refer you, Commissioner, to getting any of those things from agenda item number nine.
Item 10, consider take action to approve a resolution appointing and ordering an early voting ballot board presiding judge, and alternate presiding judge, ordinary election day president, and the presiding judge, alternate presiding judge, age of service election officials for December 41, 2012, special election for the purpose of electing one member to the Harlingen City Commission, fill the position of city commissioner, just five, or any other matters related to the foregoing.
Mayor, this is, this is a standard resolution to appoint the election judges for the special election. It is recommended to appoint Mr. Bob Someron as the presiding judge, and Wilson Someron as the alternate judge for election range. And then for the ballot board, it is recommended to appoint Cerys Silva as the presiding judge, and Nilda Gammon as the alternate judge to do the early voting.
Mayor, make the motion that we take action to approve the mentioned by city secretary for convention and resolution for the early voting process.
We have a motion.
Second, and I need to correct one thing, Ms. Amanda.
Okay.
The zip code for Someron is 78551 on the paper, and that's the post office. They live on the west end of town, so they're probably 7512.
Very well. All those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign. Motion carries. Item 11, consider take action to contribute $12,500 to the Francisco Cero Scholarship Fund created by the University of Texas System Board of Regents in honor of the chancellor, to benefit back students attending the South Texas Medical School, and as being in the public interest to benefit the citizens of Harlingen through the promotion of the creation of medical school in South Texas. And this letter, actually I have a signed version of it, it was a little mix-up of which we don't want it printed, but all four mayors have signed this letter asking all four of the city commissions of Brownsville, McAllen, Harlingen, Edford, to contribute $12,500 each to match the $50,000 that was created for the scholarship fund by the Board of Regents. This is really, I think, in addition to being an important support for the development of medical school and especially medical students, this is a demonstration of our regional cooperation around all of the cities to see this accomplished. And I think it will send a strong message to Austin and that we're ready to work together on this project. In fact, there'll be a meeting of the Board of Regents tomorrow morning, which is on 10 to 10. And so, Mayor, I'd make the motion that we take action to contribute the $12,500 for the scholarship fund.
Second.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there, this can be ongoing every year on our budget, or is there one time? Would it be, you know, something we need to probably set a foundation for to...
I think that's a good idea, and I certainly think that's something that we ought to talk about, that we ought to budget for. But this is for us, this time, this is our...
To get the ball rolling.
...city. Yeah, that we want to, that we want to play, and we want to, we want to work together on this. So, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. I suppose. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I think that's a good thing. I shared that letter with the chancellor yesterday, and he was very touched. The mayors got together on this. Board appointments, item...
Yes. To the Community Development Advisory Board, Jerry Wayne Lowry. And for the Harlingen Community Improvement Board, I'd like to reappoint Gina Cano Monreal. And to the Library Advisory Board, reappoint Robert Johnston.
I want to appoint Mr. David Weiss, Sonia Moore, Dorés Hernandez, and Horatio Park and Recreation, Juan Garcia, and golf course. Mr. Robert Duncan, and executive community services in our form, appoint to Horatio Economic Development Board. Mr. Joey Garcia, advisory board, Professor DeLion, Development Advisory Board, and Dennis, advisory board.
Okay. And I'd like to appoint Mr. S. Martin to take my place on the audit committee until, until end, until June and maybe beyond, that we reappoint. All right, it's your motion to approve the board appointments.
I have none at this time.
Mayor, make the motion to approve.
I'll start it.
All those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign. Motion carries. Item 13, opposed executive session for chapter 51, section 8, ETC, airport code, section 51, point 071, consultation with the city attorney, seek legal advice, to write Charles Lee versus City Furniture, cost number 12-00213, or appeal, district, district, so much to go on, executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission's going to move to the back room and talk to our lawyer about the item and executive session, which will be back. There'll be no other act. Second session is 6:56 PM, and that will go to...
Mayor, I have Yolanda Shoppit, and the subject is FYI. And then I have Joe Rubio, and FYI, too.
What's the FYI, Ms. Shoppit?
For your information.
No, you have to write down a, I'll let you speak, but you have to write down a topic.
Well, I have two.
Well, you can have two minutes. You have to tell us in advance what the topics are right now.
Okay, one other topic is about a certain city commissioner.
Okay, and the other topic?
The other topic is about the area chamber of commerce.
All right. Time begins now. Have to state your name, your voter registration address, or your residence address.
Yolanda Shoppit, 284, I'm the Spanish spoke, and I don't vote, so that resolves a problem. Okay, number one, I am going to speak about a certain city commissioner here who's been going around slandering my name that I have been in federal prison. I have never been in federal prison, and I have instructed my attorney to sue him for slander and violation. He knows who he is. The good thing about it is that three of the district attorney's investigators were sitting there when he was saying it. That is God's way of helping me and protecting me. The second one is, lo voy a decir en español porque es muy importante que lo diga en español. El comercio de hispanicos se cerró. Todos sabemos eso. El comercio de aquí, del area chamber of commerce, no se ha cerrado, pero tiene muchos mexicanos que están ahí. Y dos trabajadores estaban hablando muy mal de nuestra raza, de nuestra gente. Una de ellas la corrió, el otro se salió. Si quieren comer, dicen que cuando uno, you don't bite the hand that feeds you. No le muerdes la mano que te da de tragar. Ahí le estaban mordiendo la mano que les da de tragar. Se oye bien feo, verdad? Pues se oye más feo when they make racial slurs against our people. Y mañana vamos a tener un pique ahí enfrente de el area chamber of commerce. Para que se vea que nuestra raza también tiene derechos y tiene derechos de hablar en español, y hablar como lo puede hablar, mucho o sin mucho, que habla inglés, mucho sin mucho, pero habla. Estamos en el Estados Unidos, y aquí es libertad del mundo y de todos, de nosotros. Gracias.
All right. Joe Rubio.
No, wait, he couldn't come. He gave me his two minutes, but that's okay.
Okay. That's all? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. We're, thank you very much.